Seven o'clock.
I'll take it.
With that, I'll call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Wednesday, July 19th at 7:00 P.M. I'm Sarah Melish, the chair. I have with me today Jim Dietrich, Brian Salacy, John Benares, Catherine Howe, Sean Zahn, and Sue Filbert, the liaison from the planning board. We will start with 9 Crooked Lane. I will open the public hearing to the application of Ford Properties, Inc. on behalf of Richard Dakert for a special permit under sections 10.1 and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw and, under other relief as may be necessary, to excavate and construct a new single-family residence at 9 Crooked Lane, assessors map number 32, lot number 102 in District A, filed with the town clerk on June 20th, 2023. This is the flood control district, 10.1 is. And under that section of the bylaw, which is 10.1.3, the use is regulated under 10.1.3.1 with respect to dumping, filling, or placing of soil or other substances, landfill, or surfacing the land with any type of impervious materials, excavation, or removing of natural resource deposits. And then, under 10.1.3.2, erection or construction of new buildings. So that's what we're looking at with respect to this application. I believe the Fords are here. Would you like to present the application?
You bet. We have the plan on a 20 scale. Would it be better if we just put it in front of the desk? So the camera can see it, so we can see it.
So we can see it.
We need to.
Okay.
You can turn it around to show the camera if you want, but.
So some of you saw the site last night. It's a vacant site. The site was originally approved by the planning board in the mid-'80s. Richard Dakert has owned it since then. I thought about building a house there himself over the years. I decided not to maybe four or five years ago. A few people have attempted. The permitting on this site is complicated and involved. We've been at it for about two and a half months. We're making progress. Where we are at this point is we do have an order of conditions from the conservation commission, so they have signed off. We've been in touch with DPW with regards to utility connections, pre-cutting permit, curb cut permit. And we're here with you tonight regarding flood control district and earth removal to some degree. As you saw last night on the site, the site's been disturbed. It was disturbed probably 25 years ago. Some blasting has been done out there. The driveway's roughly cut in. The location of the house, so the basic footprint of the house is roughly cut in. There's a D restriction on the lot that keeps the house set 90 feet off of Crooked Lane. There's a conservation restriction that keeps the house 160 feet off the wetlands on your buttes property. So there's a very narrow swath of land where the house is located, where these two setbacks kind of determine where it should go. The house conforms to all the zoning setbacks. The tricky part of the lot is the site work. Some of it's done, not well, but some of it's done. We have, in the driveway, we have about a two-and-a-half-foot cut getting into the house. In the footprint of the house location, the maximum cut is a little over three feet. One spot might be three-and-a-half feet. We've sort of designed the house to sort of pin into the ledge, so the house sort of steps from left to right, going up into the rock. We have, trying to keep, the back of the lot is all regulated, so from here back is all regulated by conservation commission. If you walk back there, it's all ledge. It's a very flat ledge surface, very little overgrowth on it, most of it exposed, kind of attractive actually, and not much topographic relief. The site does sort of flow to the wetlands in the back, but at a very gradual slope. Most of its parkage in the front of the site, so we're, you know, we're sending the driveway at about an average grade of about 6%. If you look at the footprint of the house closely, you can see that the garage is set about 20 feet back into the house footprint. And the reason for that is trying to maintain this 6%. The comment about the driveway is real. If you look at all of those houses on the left-hand side of Crooked Lane, they all have driveways. Some of them approach 10%. 10% driveway is difficult. A 6% driveway is steep and manageable. And I would say that the vast majority of driveways along Crooked Lane are probably 6-plus, except for on the right-hand side. Some of those lots flatten out a little bit, so they're somewhat less. The location of the house, again, is sort of fixed by the two setbacks. We have an infiltrated trench running down, because this would be the westbound side of the driveway. That's picking up all of the runoff from the driveway. In the apron in front of the garage, we have a soil absorption system in the front of the lot. We're picking up all the rest of the impervious area, which would be the house and the hardscaping. The, you know, if you talk about hydraulics up there, the site's predominated by ledge, so there's a lot of runoff happening already. It shouldn't be difficult for us to minimize, reduce the actual runoff off the site, provided that we're infiltrating it, some of it back into the ground. Infiltrating it is not that easy, because there is a lot of ledge up there. So I think early on, maybe back in the '80s, I think these lots were actually designed for septic systems. So there is some testing that's been done out here, soils testing. And that show about four feet of semi-permeable material above the ledge. So that's why the infiltrator system is actually here in the front. So there is the ability, on the right side of the driveway, if you're going up the driveway, the drivers, the ledge is not consistent, but certainly ledge on the surface. So there are pockets, that's where we're counting on infiltrating the driveway runoff. Side of that. Landscape, majority of them sort of definitive landscape. So a groom lawn is in the front. It's going to be sort of mandated by the infiltrating system. So from the front to about the edge of the top of the driveway here, this is what we deem to be sort of graded lawn. The rest of it, we're going to try to do a natural landscape, so using the ledge, fitting it in, similar to what some of the other houses have done on Crooked Lane on the left-hand side. Some of them have done a very good job at it, some of them less so. We have three or four trees to cut in the front. There's a fair amount of trees that have been knocked over during the earlier excavation. And we are taking down, I think we counted another 15 trees over 12 inches and above.
Questions? John?
With respect to the leaching field, from what I understand, it just looks like a French drain system, or is there like a dry well?
No, it looks like a leaching field, like you've seen a septic system.
So basically, a lot of crushed stone and then sand?
It has sort of a manifold of pipes in it, if you will.
So it'd be like built up, kind of like a berm?
Exactly. So there'd be at least two feet of permeable material. But again, that's where some old septic pits are. And it shows, they at least got two holes down to four-plus feet. So at one point, they were going to do a septic system up there. So that's sort of.
Anything else, John? No. All right.
No.
Jim?
Do we still, do we no longer have to know what's going to be built there other than a footprint?
We're only concerned, we're only concerned about the drainage situation, that all of the runoff from the structure is captured, remains on the property and any other runoff. Because this is a conforming lot, so it's just a matter of making sure the drainage systems are adequate.
So it's basically stormwater management?
Yeah.
Well, it's less than, it's less than two acres, right? Stormwater management.
Now, this flood control, he's, it's.
Oh, I know the flood.
Oh, I'm just saying, just a generic term.
Yeah.
Yeah. Captain, do you have any questions? Sean?
I don't have any.
I have a few questions. How many cubic yards of earth and rock are you expecting to be removed from the site?
You know, the rock thing is tricky. That's the tricky part of the site. So if we were doing a consistent cut in the footprint of the house, so in the average cut, say being two or three feet, we'd probably be removing about a part of 100 yards. And in the driveway, beginning of the driveway is that great, but as we get into the, if you walk up, you can feel it, we have to take the crown out of that driveway. So there's probably another 30 yards of material. And our anticipation is it's all rock. So we're going to load that out and haul it off. If you look at it closely, there's blasting wire around there. A lot of that rock is cracked. So the hope is, now we're going to put a big excavator up there, a couple days, move 95% of the rock. I think, you know, the rock is the question for us, too. The issue with the rock is actually going to be connected to utilities, because it's going to be down five feet, and we're going to be down five feet into sort of virgin rock. And that's when, that's when the issues arise. The stuff you see is you walk up there, you know, that's sort of excavator handle.
And the house is going to have a basement, or is it going to be like slab-on grade?
The house, the right-hand side, so the, in order to keep the 6% grading on the driveway, the house on the right-hand side is a drive onto, so this garage door's on the right-hand side. The main box of the house has a full basement, and the left-hand side is pinned to the ledge. So there'll be no basement at all on the left-hand side of it.
The left-hand side being the east side?
Yes.
It'll be this box here.
Yeah.
So.
Get upside down.
So you will be doing some, to answer the chairman's question, the amount of removal will include what you've estimated to build, dig a basement?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. It may be, actually be less than that, but you get into the rock and you just start pulling and tugging. So it's not like an exact science. But it's probably right around 125 yards is my guess.
The other, one concern I have is with respect to the driveway. I happen to have a driveway that's steep in 6%. It has a drainage down one side.
Like this?
But it doesn't capture everything that comes down the driveway.
Right.
And it just seems to me, I'm just wondering if it's feasible to have some type of drainage across the base of the driveway, near Crooked Lane, like maybe 10, within 10 feet or whatever is appropriate, to have it go off to the side of the property, to stay on the property and not go onto Crooked Lane. Because that's a very shaded road, so it would tend to get ice.
Well, the truth is that this driveway's going to be sloped from left to right, so towards the infiltrating trench, right? So if the infiltrating trench wasn't taking the water, the water would run down the driveway and get caught at the bottom, right-hand side corner of the lot. And if you look at the lot, there's a pretty good grade now heading downhill in that direction. So the water would sit there and then take off down this, down the curb line of the street, if you will. Which, if you did put a drain at the bottom of the driveway, that's what you'd be hoping for. You'd be hoping to catch that water, so it wouldn't go out in Crooked Lane, right? And wind up in that swale, if you will, on the left-hand side of Crooked Lane. So, I mean, if you look at the rock right now, that's what's going to happen. So if this infiltrated trench wasn't there at all, and the driveway were sloped from left to right, all of that water would continue to run, you know, down. Now, there are homes down there, and, you know, there are driveway crossings and stuff. So, you know, is that the best thing? No, the best thing is to try to get it into the infiltrator and get it into the ground. But if it didn't, if it didn't get into the infiltrator, if somebody can say there was a snowbanking on the right-hand side and it was frozen over, then it would not make, I don't think it would make it to Crooked Lane. Crooked Lane's also crowned. It's going to make it to that swale on the right-hand side and then take off. Most of those driveways, if you look on that side of the street, are doing the exact same thing. They're all headed down that swale, they're all headed down the left-hand side. I meant to come up here the other day and heavy ran on Sunday and missed it. But.
You can kind of see from the contouring on here, the crown of the road and that swale, as you mentioned, right along here. That's where the water would shut off and then head in that direction.
What's the slope of the driveway from left to right?
It'd be about a quarter percent per foot, so it's not a whole lot. Because if you get too much of it going.
Right.
You wind up sliding, you know? So you have to be careful with that, too. So about a quarter percent. So the difference, you know, we have the driveway at 12 feet to 14 feet wide.
Ah, 12 feet.
12 feet wide, so it'd be three inches different on the right side from the left side.
And is there a reason why you can't put a drainage channel across the base of the driveway?
We could, we could put one in there. I just don't know how effective it will be. But if you thought that that was a precaution, again, if you put the, if you put the drainage channel down, which is not that hard to do, because we'll have it all broken up anyways, it's going, that drainage channel has to exit somewhere. And it's going to exit to the right and into that same swale. So, you know, the water's going to make its way there one or two ways. If you thought that was necessary, my thought is, is that that water will be running, 6% is running pretty hot, actually, if it's running on the driveway. And certainly, that's the reason for the infiltrated trench, is not to let that happen, because you don't want that water running. That driveway's 140 feet long. You know, that could be an icy issue. You want to get that water off.
You want to get it in advance, that way it's not all one, you know?
Not that it wouldn't be wet, and it's still.
But I mean, my driveway curves around. And the water comes around the curve and goes down the driveway.
Yeah, but during that storm we had on Sunday, I noticed a lot of people's driveways, the water is just skipping over that drainage.
The drainage thing?
Trench in the, at the beginning of the driveways.
So you don't think it's worth it?
No, I think it's a good, good idea to have. But I understand the point of trying to capture the water as it comes down.
And then if we don't, you know, we do have that issue, right? So if you don't capture up top, now all of a sudden, it is headed for the bottom.
It's just moving so fast.
That's not, that's not good news for us either, because that driveway's going to be icy.
What do you think, Sean?
Well, with the pitch of the, with the pitch they're putting on the driveway, it's going over to the same spot. Even if you put the drain at the bottom, it's still going to just, whatever, it doesn't go down the side, it's still going to go over the left way anyway. I don't think you're going to have, I don't think it's going to serve that much of a purpose to put that across.
Okay, you don't think the water will?
No, I'm thinking it'd make that much difference.
Really heavy rain?
If heavy rain, if it's coming down, it's going to go across it anyway. It's not going to catch it that fast.
I agree. I think that basically three inches.
Yeah.
It's going to, it's going to just drain in that direction.
Yeah. Yeah, the grade is on the crest.
Much more, much more than that, you know.
Probably a quarter inch per foot.
Exactly.
And the other question I have, as you talk about landscaping, are you limiting the ho-ranning and the blasting to the footprint of the house and the driveway and the leaching area, you know, but not the rest of, are you leaving the rest of the lot undisturbed?
If you look at the driveway now, I know you're out there. If you look at the driveway, you know, there's ledge exposed on either side, and it's all cracked and broken. So the thought is, is that, as we tear that driveway apart, we're going to knock some of that down, leave it still exposed, but knock some. So, you know, you can imagine walking up the hill backwards with an excavator, just pulling on it. And so just to open it up to, so you don't, you don't look like you're going through a cave, if you will. And then we're going to leave the ledge exposed. And then just, you know, either plant on it or just leave it exposed as is. And there's a couple up there on the, there's a, in the back of Crooked Lane on the right-hand side, the new homes, they've done a very nice job with exposing the ledge and landscaping around it. And it's, you know, quite frankly, it's just too expensive not to do it that way.
Is that one question? On the drawing, where does the actual pitch of the driveway begin? As far as, like, I see the drainage is up, it starts at the garage, but does the pitch also begin there?
Well, the garage doors, you know, the garage is flat, right? So it's going to, yeah. So for the first 10 feet.
10 feet off.
I'm making this up, but, you know, it would be something like this. The first 10 feet or so is going to shed from left to right at an angle. So we'll come across the driveway. But it doesn't stop right in front of the garage doors. Actually, we thought about that a little more. We thought about what the chair said. But it makes sense to have the.
Trench.
Yeah. Can I connect to the infiltrated trench right there, right? Just like, maybe that's the solution. Yeah, exactly. Because it falls dead flat across the three bays. That might be the solution, actually. Put your drain up around the garage doors, so that that water that originates.
You have a slight pitch on the driveway, or you just?
Because the first, you know, as you pull away from the door, the first five or six feet is going to be pretty much dead flat.
Sure.
And then it's going to start to take off. And it's going to take off at a 45-degree angle until it gets up. Then when you get into the 12-foot section of the driveway, it's all going to be going up to the infiltrated trench. Maybe that's the thing to do.
A lot of bees falls down there at the end of the driveway. No one's going to want to go get them.
6% is, is not a flat driveway, but it's a manageable driveway. 10% is a steep driveway. And that's, you know, climbing a 10% driveway in the initial, on a snowy day. Shouldn't, 6% should not, hopefully.
Anything else? Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this application? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing no hand raised, are we ready for a motion? Do you want conditions attached to it?
I'm okay. I'm good with the press.
I was going to mention the infiltration system along the drive and the leachants.
Yeah, I think those options should be considered. Because, you know, the scope can change during construction.
Right.
But attaching it to.
But we have to make sure that all of the runoff is being captured on the property.
Well, I think all 100%.
Yeah, it's all supposed to be taken down. To, so the purpose, the purpose of this thing is to, wait a minute. Let me, let me just pull it up.
Because that seems like a little bit over 100%.
Yeah, it could seem impossible to.
Yeah.
It's not. What did it, it's.
Well.
I think we've, you know, it's, I think it's a zero increase in runoff off the site. So there's, I mean, there's a lot of, there's runoff off the site now.
Right.
And so for the 6,300 or 6,800 square feet of impervious area that we've added to the site, we're picking up, you know, 2,300 of that in the infiltrated trench, 2,800 of that in the soil absorption system. I think the fact that we submitted this plan to the zoning board of appeals and that we actually abide by it, right, and actually do it.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Maybe, maybe the condition should just be with drainage at least as good as that depicted. So if they want to improve it, they can.
And that becomes basically your decision.
But this is the baseline?
Yeah, yeah.
It just becomes a little bit, you know.
Well, yeah, we're going to have to make sure it's right.
That's why I'm asking questions, but I'm open to discussing it if other people feel differently.
At least I'm not walking down there to get the newspaper at the bottom of the driveway.
I think when you see it done, 6% is manageable.
Yeah, I think mine's over 10.
Yeah, over 10 is.
I can show a comparison.
Definitely not going to your house.
Over 10, so.
Carefully going to my house, who's tripping on a baseball.
Heart attack going to her house. Heart attack coming upstairs.
With that, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Ford Properties, Inc. on behalf of Richard Dakert for a special permit under sections 10.1 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, excavate and construct a new single-family residence in the flood control district, 9 Crooked Lane, assessors map number 32, lot number 102 in District A, right? Filed with the town clerk on June 20th, 2023, based on a finding that the proposed use will not result in the creation or aggravation of flooding conditions, is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, and will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and all factors under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met, based on the following conditions. All runoff from the residence will be captured and diverted to the roof drain leaching field at least as good as depicted on the site plan prepared by Gateway Consultants, Inc., dated July 13, 2023. The driveway dwelling and other components of the projects will be located substantially as depicted on the site plan prepared by Gateway Consultants, Inc., dated 7/13/23. And the infiltration for the drive, the system for the driveway will be at least as good as that, as that depicted on the site plan. Anything else? They're okay?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, second. Any discussion? You're ready to vote? Sean?
Approve.
Captain? Approve. Brian?
Approve.
John?
Approve.
And Sarah, please. Who would like to write this?
I have one outstanding, so I'm not going to raise my hand.
Oh, I'll write it.
Oh, thank you, Brian. Who would like to review it?
Hope we're in no hurry.
Sean would review it. Okay. So you're all sat?
Great.
We will write it within 90 days.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the only, we have no choice then.
Does Kay want?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is 117 School Street. As you may recall, we had a pool at 117 School Street last month. This is for the pool house slash lot. I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design, Inc. on behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day for variance under section 7.4.6 or a special permit under section 7.2 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and, under other relief as may be necessary, to construct a new 943-square-foot pool house barn on a non-conforming lot at 117 School Street, assessors map number 40, lot number two in District A, filed with the town clerk on June 21st, 2023. And one of the questions before us is whether this is a special permit or a variance. And a special permit may be issued to change, extend, or alter an existing non-conforming structure, but a variance is required for a new nonconformity. Since the request is for a new accessory structure on a non-conforming lot, I believe a variance is required.
And why, why is the lot non-conforming? What's the?
It lacks frontage and it is too small. It's undersized.
But as far as the, like, the impervious area, is it okay? How does it meet those metrics there?
We'll discuss that with the application. Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is just the basic tenant that it's. If you didn't have a structure on this lot, you wouldn't be able to build on it unless you had a variance. And so now you're adding a new structure.
Got it.
So should be a variance. I see Brian Stein. Are you going to be presenting this, Brian?
I am. Thank you. For the record, Brian Stein, BDS Design, Christopher and Nicole Day are on the call as well. Can I share my screen?
Yes, I believe I just opened it up for you.
Okay, thanks. So just real quick, I'll answer that first question from, from John. Can everybody see this okay?
Yeah.
So we, sort of what it knows, we received a decision or permit from the planning board regarding a drainage system, because we are in the groundwater protection district. And we purposely kept our impervious surface under the required 30%. So we didn't need a variance for that. We received a positive decision from them a couple months ago regarding that drainage system. So, you know, to answer John's question, we are just under the total impervious surface at 29.7% with structures and with overall impervious. Real quick, to do that, I'll go to the site plan here. We, we're enlarging the driveway as part of this to make it easier to turn around. You know, some of you saw, site visit is pretty tight back there currently. And in doing so, we are adding permeable pavers. Two portions of the driveway. Two portions of driveway to enlarge it and to also, you know, not have any more impervious surface than necessary. The entire patio around the pool, a poolhouse, is impervious as well. That all collects the water and that sends it to a drainage system out, out behind. The reason we're here tonight is for the poolhouse, pool barn here that I'm circling. It's about twenty-two by thirty-eight with a little five-foot wide piece off the end. Again, it's really a pool barn entertainment area for the applicant. Basically all it is, it's a, looks like a barn. It meets all setback, i.e. everything, meets everything in terms of requirements for zoning. Like Sarah said, the only thing the site doesn't meet is the frontage and lot area. We're only under the lot area by a couple thousand square feet. I'll just go over the elevations real quick here in plan. Pretty simple structure, gable roof, little shed on the side. Again, just living area, prep kitchen type, type of thing without stove or anything. And then eating area and a bathroom, just sort of a pool. Shingle, pretty, pretty straightforward structure. I think overall, that's, that's mostly it from my standpoint. I, you know, in my opinion, I think it's a special permit only because we are, yes, the lot is non-conforming, but the entire structure we're proposing is conforming. We're not creating a new non-conformity. The lot is already not conforming, it's not getting more non-conforming. So that's just my, my take on the whole thing. And we don't believe that this is in any way detrimental to the neighborhood. They have, you know, they've talked to both their neighbors on either side and they're supportive. And you really can't see this from the street given the foliage, maybe in the winter a little bit with some, some of the foliage over here when it's, when there's no leaves on the trees. But there's a fence that runs along the property now between, between the neighbors. There's a pretty good sized screen on the other side, the north side, between them and one nineteen. So this really isn't in view by too many, by, by many people at all. So I will open it up for questions.
You have questions, Sean?
No, I don't have questions. I just think that from the lot frontage perspective, you know, it's really not an issue here cause it's in the backyard. And in the, the lot area, it barely misses the mark. I mean, the one thing I was really.
Well, it's ten percent.
I, I suppose what I was really looking at was a lot coverage in the impervious surface metrics. And they meet those metrics, so. I suppose if we're gonna grant a variance, you know.
It has to be.
These are the things that I'm looking at.
There has to be hardship, though.
Oh, some hardship, don't circle high, it's me, I'm sorry.
If it were, if it were attached to the house, it would be a special permit. Because it would be extending an existing non-conforming structure. But this is a new.
Right.
A new accessory structure, so it's a new non-conformity.
But in, like, in reality, I think if we're, if you're extending the existing house, that's actually more of a non-conformity than this. But I understand your point.
That's not what case law says.
I understand your point, but.
But, yeah. It's not close enough to be attached. Brian, do you have any questions?
Well, can I ask this? Let, let's, let's pretend that the poolhouse is scaled down even half the size, right? It still would require a variance.
Right. I do have concerns about the size of it. Its footprint is the same as the house, basement, area.
Well, yeah, I guess my point is whether they're building a very large poolhouse or a very small poolhouse, they're still in the same predicament.
Exactly. Yep. Unless it's under two hundred square feet.
No.
So, so maybe, maybe the question should be back to the applicants, I don't know what, what their hardship is.
Okay.
Well, we don't believe it's a variance in this case, because we're not making a new non-conformity. The lot itself is not conforming.
No, that the new non-conformity is the fact that you're adding an accessory structure. A non-conforming lot does not allow you to build any structures without a variance. Unless you've got a, your existing dwelling is grandfathered. So you're now creating a new accessory structure on a non-conforming lot, which is a new non-conformity. Cause otherwise you wouldn't be able to build it.
But the non-conformity isn't new, the non-conformity is the lot size.
No, it's, it's the fact that you're building a structure on a non-conforming lot is a new non-conformity. Because you're building something that otherwise you cannot build because of the size of the lot.
Right, but there's already a structure on it.
It's a different structure. You can change, extend, or alter an existing non-conforming structure.
Correct.
That does not give you the right to build a new accessory structure without a variance.
But it, in which case law doesn't say that it requires a variance? And I know it requires a special permit, that, that's fair that, you know.
If you look at all the documentation out there, a new non-conformity requires a variance.
I don't think it binds us.
Let me hear from the board, please. Catherine?
Well, I was just gonna, you know, I, I was, I was gonna suggest that, you know, it's ultimately up to us whether it requires a variance or a special permit. So, you know, maybe instead of arguing the point, we could get an answer to the question of what the hardship would be in the case that there is a variance required. Is there any posited hardship here that we could consider? No?
Well, it's not up for us to determine what the purpose is.
No, I'm asking that if there's, like, what is, cause they, they need to say what their hardship is.
The applicant has to explain what the hardship is.
If, or if there's not one, then tell us that, but.
Well, I mean, depends where you define this hardship, but, I mean, the hardship is the shape of the lot, right? Could say that.
Is it?
That, I'm just, I'm accepting that that's their posited hardship. I can, you know, it, it does seem like a long, long lot, it's not very square.
But that doesn't go to.
I don't know if that's actually, yeah.
It seems to me like the shape of a lot would go to a setback issue.
You would think.
Well, in this case, though, and that's why I struggle with this, the, the, the poolhouse meets the setback requirements.
There's no way to bring it into form, maybe.
It, you know, it'd be different if it was like right on the, on the property line. And again, going back to the lot coverage by structures and the impervious surface square footage, like, I would have an issue with that. This, this house in the village, you know, a lot of, I mean, a lot of the lots are just like this.
Right, that's the problem.
And that's why you don't really see any pools in the village. So. From my perspective, because it meets the setback requirements and these other metrics that I just talked about, like, I would be okay. But that's me.
Sean?
Do we know, we don't have any rebutters to them.
I'm speaking against them.
I'm speaking against it, correct?
John, are you saying you would, you would be happy to grant a variance or that you believe this qualifies for a special permit?
Personally, I think it's, this is a special permit situation. But if we had to vote on a variance, I would still be okay with that based on what I just mentioned.
I just wanted to clarify.
I, I think that, you know, when you look at the overall site plan, I think we've seen a lot, just around town. We've seen other lots where the, the house takes up the entire lot and there's not much space for anything else. I think even with the existing house and the proposed structure, that there's still, you know, sufficient space. It's not like there, everything's crammed in on the lot. Which goes back to that coverage by structure metric.
But the, the challenge we have, and this is what frustrates me because of the way the districts have gone. The challenge we have is that our bylaws say you need twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. What are your thoughts, Catherine?
I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, no, I'm, I'm thinking about, I was, I was trying to recall other similar situations that have come up and whether we require a variance or a special permit. Cause we've done like a million pools on oddly shaped lots.
Well, we, so if, if we have, let me put it in this context. If we put it on, we're not, this is not a pool, this is an accessory structure. And we're making a distinction between a pool and accessory structure. We granted a, the pool, we used, we granted a special permit for the pool.
Right.
But if we had, if the house, if the house conformed with all setbacks today and they wanted to increase the size to go into the setback, that's a new non-conformity and we require a variance.
Right.
And under the bylaw, if you, if you have a lot undersized, at the time the zoning goes into effect, you grandfather the existing structures.
Yep.
Doesn't grandfather a new structure. And that's why I feel a new structure requires a variance.
Yeah.
Cause you're not changing, altering, or extending an existing non-conforming structure. You're creating a brand new one.
You said that the trigger for this is two hundred square feet? You mean, if they had something that was a structure less than two hundred square feet, they wouldn't need to come in front of us?
Right, a structure less than, an accessory structure less than two hundred square feet doesn't need to build any permit.
So if the building were smaller, they wouldn't be free to be here.
But two hundred square feet is a lot different from nine, three, and four.
Correct, I'm just thinking of a situation if someone wanted to build a little shed in their backyard and they're stuck in this situation.
And they can do it. They can do it.
Is this something that you've, I don't care that you've researched with counsel? Or is this our, is this your?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I suspected, but you haven't said that yet.
And. Yes. And a, a new non-conformity requires a variance.
But, well, and they defined a new structure as a non-conformity, even though it's all conforming. Because.
New structure on a non-conforming lot is a non-conforming.
Right.
But, but the point is that the lot size is already an existing non-conformity, this is not creating a new.
No, the structure is.
No, no, no. So if you have a non-conforming lot.
Yes.
You can't build anything without a variance. Okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So the existing house was there before zoning, so it's grandfathered. So you can alter or change that, do what you want with a special permit. But you're now talking about a new structure.
It's not thing which has been in this household.
With a new structure that doesn't exacerbate any existing non-conformity.
It's a new non-conformity because you're building a structure on a non-conforming lot.
Already there, though.
But the lots.
And then simply put, is what you're saying, as I understand it, is that any new structure on a non-conforming lot, regardless if it was existing, is, it requires a variance. Any new structure on a non-conforming lot, even if the structure itself is conforming.
Correct.
Right, that's Sarah's.
Then that's what you're saying.
So how is it that we don't see more of these situations? You know what I mean? Because there's a lot of non-conforming lots in this town, and this is the first time that I've seen this.
Well, we had the issue raised at two glass of wine.
Did we get?
What?
Opinion from town council with respect to this, on this matter, or was it a different application with a similar?
They, town council does not give us opinions. Okay? They only provide information on case law.
Okay. And. And you forwarded us an email, right, on May seventeenth, and I'm just wondering if it relates to this application.
That related to a swimming pool.
Okay. But that had some language that's useful in general about the case law.
Right, and, and the case, the case that was given to us was maybe changes to an existing non-conforming structure. It wasn't a new accessory structure.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I realize I'm not voting tonight. I thought you needed me tonight, I should've stayed home. But now I'm here, and I happen to agree with you on your interpretation of the bylaw. You might wanna ask the applicant, what is their resistance to asking for a variance? They, they seem to be dancing around not wanting to ask for a variance. I'd like to know why.
I wouldn't say they're dancing around.
Well, you keep bringing up the same thing, Brian. We've answered your question three or four times and you don't seem to be satisfied with the answer. So that, to me, that's dancing around. Maybe poor choice of words, but that's how I look at it.
That's fine. The only reason is when I went to Paul in Orlando on this a while back now, I asked him specifically about this, you know, what, what we're gonna require here. Obviously a special permit for the pool. And we're in, you know, groundwater protection district, we needed a permit for that. And he said, if you're gonna be over, you know, thirty percent with your lot coverage with anything, you need a variance. I said, we'll try to stay under that, and we did. And there was nothing mentioned about a variance for the, for the structure itself. And I think, also thinking back to a number of years ago at forty-eight Central Street, we were gonna do a new garage, a detached two-car garage. That lot was not conforming due to lot width, or I'm sorry, frontage. And again, that, that wasn't gonna require any permit from you, it was just, it was historic and conservation.
There is a case, Fitzsimmons versus Board of Appeals of Chatham, that held a structure is non-conforming if located on a lot that does not meet the minimum lot area requirement of the zoning bylaw.
Simply put, any construction on a non-conforming lot requires, just speaking, I mean, we've got an existing building. To put a new structure, no matter even if it's conforming, on a non-conforming lot, is what you're telling me, requires a variance. Simply put.
Yeah, and we have so many non-conforming, well, lots in this town by lot size. How come in seven years I've been on this board, it's the first time I'm seeing this?
I think we can do it either way, and I think it depends on the factors of the lot and issue. Like, I think. It depends, I mean, I, I would be more concerned with a variance in this situation if the new structure was encroaching on a setback or creating a non-conformity with impervious surface or whatever. But since it's just the structure itself and it's not creating any other new non-conformity, I would be comfortable proceeding with a special permit in this situation. But I don't know, I mean, the board needs consensus on this, so that's, that's my opinion, but I don't know how everyone else feels about that.
What's your sense, Sean?
I'm putting all with Catherine on this, I mean, we're not, it's not really, they're meeting all the setbacks and everything else. It's not creating another non-conformity.
I think you're just missing what it says in the bylaw, and you're trying to find ways around to work around it. I've been on the zoning board longer than you, John, and I do not recall this kind of situation coming up before. But that doesn't mean that just because it's never come up before, that we have to look at it and ignore the bylaw as it's written
I'm not, I'm reading, I'm, I'm going on, I'm reading the words that town council sent us, and I'm looking at what they had to say and thinking about how it applies to this situation. I don't think I'm misinterpreting the bylaw. Maybe I am, but.
Maybe standing a little.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian?
I can go either way. I mean, my sense is that it's now just semantics as to whether it's a, a special permit or variance, the building will be built.
Well, I don't know, because if it's a variance, there has to be a. Well, I don't know, because if it's a variance, there has to be a hardship, and I'm not going to approve a variance without a hardship, because I think that's a
Well, yes.
that's a slippery slope to just rubber stamping things. So if we decide that this is a variance situation, there it has to be a stated hardship.
Well, in that regard, I think as 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 Sarah points out, as my, I'm just trying to simplify, I'm just, you know, I boil it down to the lowest common denominator,
Yeah, boil it down.
and that's me, okay? And the lowest common denominator tells me if it's a new structure on a nonconforming lot, it requires a variance, then this is a new new structure on a nonconforming lot. That's the way I interpret it. And how to demonstrate the hardship for a pool house.
Yeah.
There lies the rub.
Yeah.
Have we ever granted variances for tennis courts? I feel like we have.
Sounds familiar, I feel like that was familiar.
Yeah, sure.
I don't think so.
Was the basketball courts on, uh, a couple years ago, I think it was, was that a special permit or was that a, uh, variance down on, uh, Front Street?
I think it's a special permit.
A special permit.
Because we were forcing it to meet the setback, we're making it move to sort of conform with the setbacks.
Against, it wasn't a nonconforming lot either, was it? I don't recall it.
But it it, I mean, I think that if we had
I'm looking for precedent, I think is what John's looking for.
Yeah.
And University Lang, we did all those sports.
That was a special permit.
Yeah. I don't know about that pool on University Lang.
Oh, in that, on that new construction?
No, no.
Yeah, you're like
The one that was like a koi fish pond, it's what she said.
That was quite a lot. We definitely granted a variance up on University, and that was because of the the shape of the lot.
Right, yeah.
Was that for the sport court?
No.
No, no, that was for the thing that was a little koi pond that they were making.
And they have to excavate a bunch of, or a bunch of stone.
Yeah, yeah. But that was the the shape of the lot.
Right.
It's the shape of a lot, too.
Yes. Well, that was in the setback. See, that's the difference.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that's we're not with setbacks.
When when we've had variances come up, it's because they've been in the in the setbacks.
It's clear, yeah.
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 Um so it's it's not an open question. But it's problematic when you have two-thirds of the properties of Manchester nonconforming um, the way the bylaws are written.
Yeah.
That's that's the challenge.
Um, Brian, can I ask you, the the pool house, it's just going to have a bathroom in it, right? It's not going to have like, is it going to have a running water, like a sink in a kitchen and all that?
Yes.
There won't be a sink, it's like a bar, yeah.
Okay.
It's a bar sink, not a full kitchen.
You don't put like a range in there or anything, right?
Correct. There's no range, no, there's no range, nope. No, stop.
Just a fireplace.
Giant tuxedo.
The bathroom, yeah.
So it's basically a structure that's com- comfortable just to have people gather indoors, nothing more, not a potential Airbnb, like, or anything like that?
No, no, no sleeping facilities, no.
And, um, is the only heating source a fireplace?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Is the only heating source the fireplace?
No, it'll have it'll have heat, so they can use it shoulder seasons out there as a, you know, hangout space.
So, I mean, if, the way I see this, this is a pool in the village area. Some people don't like, you know, living next to people with pools.
Pools.
If you have an indoor space, like a like a pool house where people can just gather and kind of be more quiet,
Right.
you know? I think that makes sense, and I
Well, if you build a patio, open patio would know with lines.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, if you're a neighbor and you live next, you know, at least people can make, bring the party indoors.
Yeah, it's much Yeah, right.
No, it's
And not be that much of a disturbance to neighbors.
Will there be porch within inside this building?
It's behind it.
Huh?
It's behind it.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah. I don't know. Complex.
So as weird as it sounds, that's where I see the hardship. I want to put a pool in my yard, but I don't want people
Don't even
With wet bathing suits walking into my house.
It's a real hardship.
Stay out there.
Stay out with a straight face.
Stay with the pool, stay with the pool table.
I understand. We we see pools, we see tennis, we see all sorts of things here, okay? I, you know, this is an amenity, of course, but if if we're going to frame this, if we're going to vote on this as a variance, then there has to be hardship. And, I mean, I'm just talking about how I would view this.
It's it's got to be, um, due to the shape or topography of the land.
Yeah.
And sort of conditions.
So, we're not looking to, but it's, within the setbacks, right, so the shape of the land doesn't seem to
Right. Right.
Aren't you glad you're not voting?
Pardon?
So what's, what's the sense? Do we want to go on a special permit or a variance?
Fine with a special permit.
I'm, I would like to say I'm fine with a special permit. I have no problem with anything here, except as you, as I interpret the law, the bylaw. Alright, and I don't think it's our role to ignore the bylaw to make accommodate. I would love to see this.
So Catherine?
Um, I would be comfortable with proceeding with this as a special permit. Um, or as a variance if they can show hardship. So, whatever motion is made and whatever people, you know. Did I see this, Sarah? Is that okay?
I think the bylaw is pretty clear on the matter. Everyone's trying to figure accommodate these people, the bylaw says, no, you can't do that, the building is sufficiently large fireplace and a kitchen and a toilet. It could be used for purposes down the road, and that's what worries me.
Okay. The the issue is that even if they scaled it down by half, they'd still have to get a variance.
It would have to be under the minimum, which is 100
200 feet.
200 square feet, which is more than sufficient to take care of pool equipment. But it's not, this this is a significant building. Uh, there are houses, there are some houses in town that are not much larger than 900 and solid square feet.
I agree with that.
Well, the footprint is the same size as the basement of this house.
Say again?
The the size of this barn is the the basement of the principal residence is 976 square feet.
Yeah, so it's just about Yeah.
No, I'd say 1000.
This is a significant structure. Someone, if someone has to convince me that this isn't a a variance, uh, someone's supposed to convince me right now.
What? Well, the 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 question, and and this is something that if, if you make the argument that there's existing structure on the lot, okay?
If it was attached, it would be different, right?
And the proposed accessory structure is merely intensifying the fact that you have an existing structure by adding another structure. You could argue it's a special permit. Which would be different than having a nonconforming lot with no structures on it. It's it's, the problem is, it's not resolved in case law, it's part of the problem.
Yeah, that is part of the problem. It's an unanswered question in case law, apparently.
Yeah. Yeah.
If this, if this was an addition, if this was somehow attached to the existing structure, it'd be adding or altering the existing structure.
No question, no question, it's a special permit.
Me, too.
Right, but it's not.
Right, but the question is, is you, if you have a nonconformity of an existing structure on a nonconforming lot, then by adding another structure, are you merely intensifying that existing nonconformity of having a structure on a nonconforming lot? If you make that argument, then you can say it would be a special permit.
Because you're not creating any new, under that logic, you're not creating a new nonconformity like you would be if you went into the setback,
If you use that logic.
or you went over the lot coverage or whatever, and since you're checking all of those boxes,
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
is is already a developed parcel of land, so it's not like a nonconforming lot that is undeveloped, like the one, you know.
Yeah.
So this becomes the gray area of a black, of what would normally be black and white.
It is gray. I think it's unresolved in the case law, too, so
Right. That's the problem, is is it's
I can be swayed to believe that this is you know, black and white
Is really nice.
Black and white, it's a, it requires a variance. Right, it's a new structure on an existing nonconforming lot.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, black and white, it requires a variance, if, as, uh, Sarah has now
shit.
MacGyvered.
MacGyvered, adjusted, uh, basically moved some words here, there, and everywhere.
That's what lawyers do.
That's what lawyers do. Uh, then I could be, I could, I could buy into that. That's how you want to present it.
I mean, I don't
That that that
You were looking at the same email I was, right?
Yeah, the same email that you sent out from council, and I don't know, it says, to me, it sounds pretty clear, it should be
It isn't clear, no.
Well, it's it's clear that it's not clear.
Yeah, clearly, I mean, it's, but I mean, it leans more towards a, to me, towards a special permit than a
It depends on whether you consider a new accessory structure, is it new nonconformity, or whether
Right. It's an existing nonconformity.
Or or it's an existing nonconformity, that's the difference.
Right.
Because there's an existing structure on it.
And I'm guessing that that's how Paul interprets it.
I don't, Paul didn't interpret it.
I, yeah.
No, it's
I talked to Paul and, no.
Is it, how, if a proposed accessory structure simply intensifies
No, we're not reading that.
No, but I'm just saying, it's, but then, if it's just intensifying, then
Right, the issue is, is is a new structure, a new nonconformity,
Yes.
or because there's already a structure on there, it's intensifying an existing nonconformity.
Right.
That is the issue.
That's the issue.
Right. Okay.
It's not intensifying anything because it's the new structures within the parameters of the setback and
Yeah, but it's adding more mass. By adding another structure, you're intensifying the fact that your existing structure is nonconforming if it wasn't there.
That's what I, sorry, that's what I meant to say, that it's, it's not a new nonconformity.
So, you want me to make a motion for a special permit?
You're the chair, you can make a motion for whatever you want.
I move to close the publica, whoops, was there anybody from the public who wanted to speak on this application?
Wait a minute, was there a public comment?
I knew we should have went there.
They all just fell asleep, everyone just fell asleep.
During your extended legal debate here. Anyone awake?
Brian, can you close down your screen so I can see if anybody raises their hand in Zoom, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, he's there.
No.
They all went to bed.
They all left.
Okay.
They're all glazed over.
Um I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day for a special permit under section 7.2 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, under other relief as may be necessary to construct a new 943 square foot pool house slash barn which meets all setback requirements of the district in which it is located on a lot that contains 20,020 square feet, where 22,500 square feet is required at 117 School Street, Assessors Map Number 40, Lot Number 2 in District A, filed with the Town Clerk on June 21st, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed pool house barn is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and the propos, and will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and the requirements and conditions under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the following conditions, the pool house barn is located as depicted on the plan of land prepared by Gerose Land Surveying dated May 10th, 2023, an L1 landscape plan, option A, prepared by Old Rich Landscape. The pool house slash barn shall be constructed substantially as depicted on A 1.1 pool barn dash floor plan and elevations prepared by BDS Design dated June 15th, 2023. Total coverage by structures shall not exceed 15% and total coverage by structures and impervious services shall not exceed 35, 30%. Do I have a second?
Second?
Catherine seconds. Any discussion? We've had enough. Um, I'll take a vote. John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. I'll write this since I'm writing the other one on 117 School Street.
I'll review it.
Thank you for running me up. I know I read it somewhere, doesn't it?
Okay. All set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to stay on for the next one.
Oh, that's right. For, where's my Um, we're now moving on to the continued public hearing, um, for four Butler Ave. I will open the continued public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli for a special permit under sections 10.1, 12.5, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, under other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing nonconforming structure in the flood zone one foot at additional levels for additional living space and adjusting the footprint, which will result in it approaching an additional 0.1 feet into the west side setback, and adding a deck which will approach an additional 0.4 feet into the setback at Four Butler Ave, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 33 in District B, filed with the Town Clerk on May 15th, 2023. So last meeting we had the discussion regarding stories, half stories, et cetera, and I thought it would be useful to discuss the various definitions.
Great.
That I'm here here someplace. So, the when we look at the design the question is, is what is the story?
Sounds like my father.
Here we go again.
What's the story?
So it's my understanding that the garage is not that one half of the height of the garage level is not in the ground. Is that correct?
Will not be underground, is that, I missed the end of that, will not be underground?
A bit, so a basement is defined as
Right.
having an underground of of having more than one half of its entire wall area below the level of the adjoining ground.
Right, there will not be.
Is the crawl space in the same level or a different level?
The crawl space is essentially at that same level, I mean, exactly where the floor is about 100%, probably slightly higher.
So is that half of, is half of that in the ground?
Roughly.
Roughly, and well, from the garage side, yes. On the, if you're looking at the house, at the garage door, the right side, that whole footprint there on the right, is crawl space.
Is the mechanical room in the back above ground?
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the back side of it's bit buried a little bit, but not, not four feet. Maybe two feet.
Okay. So if this were a basement, and it has no living space, we would not have to count it as a story. But when you look at the bylaws for a garage, at one and a half stories, they count the garage as a story. And then, a story is defined as the portion of the building contained between any floor and the floor, a roof next to above it. It, it does not include the basement if half of it's underground or the upper portion if the sloping roof and doesn't have any human occupancy. So, the challenge we have here is, is different floor levels. And the. What is the difference in level between these splits?
So, can, can I go to the plan real quick?
Yes, please.
We're gonna get new plans, right?
I'm looking at my phone.
That's what I am too. For some reason, I thought we were getting it with.
We got a calculation, but it was just on the total.
Yep.
What?
He's gonna have calculations.
Well, he gave us a calculation that said.
Yep, so, right, so what I did, actually, I'm gonna show you what I showed Paul. One second. I used to do a super quick sketch for Paul recently. Kind of describing how, you know, in a split level, you don't count each level as a story, right? It's not a, you know, typical split level is, you know, three levels, but it's not three stories. Um, so this is how this was interpreted in that you've got your garage and first level, they are, you know, give or take three feet apart. Right, so that's level one.
So the garage is three feet lower than the first level?
Yeah, yeah, give or take, three and change, yep.
Okay.
And then the next level up, again, is about four feet difference between the two. So the level right above the garage and then right above the entry is level two. And then, your upper level that we're talking about is, is here with this one line. So, the calculation that we provided showed the area of this upper level into the area of this second level, which was, I think, 58, 59%, so under the two thirds. And I think the question is whether, you know, this is, it's two different levels, but it can be on the same story, I guess is the, is the real question.
Right, and that it says, between any floor. So it, it, it seems like one could argue that on this part over the garage, the garage is a story, and then there's two above it.
That's what I see. Right, but the, the question is really, is this, what I have labeled two here, this second story, if you will, can be counted as one? Because I think if you said, hey, it's a separate story, then you've got a five story, which I think we all know really isn't the case.
Well, no, I was assuming that you had to look at each roofline, so the story over each component, so the left side would be one set of stories and the right side would be a different set of stories because the floors are at different levels. That's what I.
Right, but, right, so, yeah, and I think I mentioned last time, I reminded Paul the other day that it's not built like this now, we ended up changing, it was a byright poolhouse that had a partial second floor. Um, and the whole first floor was, you know, X number of square feet, but we were under the two thirds. And I just, I, I confirmed with him, I said, Paul, is, are we, is this two thirds calculation the area of the whole first floor, or is it just the areas directly under this second floor? And he said, no, it's the whole first floor.
But you're not on one level, and that makes a difference.
Well, but, right, but floor versus, I, I, I'm not debating there on different, I'm not debating with the not on different levels. But in terms of floor or story, right, because you, you could have a sunken living room that's, you know, two feet down in a house, it's not on a different floor.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying, you can't say this is a five-floor house.
Is there any reason why you can't change the level so that you don't have the splits?
Well, so this, the, this living space here, um, at the entry, I call it elevation 14, that's our, that's where we have to be to meet flood elevation.
Right.
Or living space. Um, the garage can stay where it is, which is essentially existing, right now, it's living space, which we can't keep.
Right.
Um, it used to be a garage years ago. Um, so, you know, ideally, we want to keep that as, you know, back into a garage, because they, you know, you want to be able to use a garage. Um, and, you know, obviously, if we were to, well, it depends, but if you, if you raise the whole thing up on the right side, you know, the entry and the other level up a whole floor, you're up, you know, eight feet above grade or nine feet above grade, then, you know, you're, you're going up that far to go to your front door. So the idea was to keep it, you know, as low as we can, at elevation 14, which is our minimum, and keeping that as our front entry. Kind of like it is now.
I mean, what do people think?
I think the only, well, real quick, the only way, I guess it doesn't really change anything necessarily. If we were to push the floor right above the garage up to meet the other level.
Right.
Right, it just makes the whole thing higher, which we didn't want to do.
Right. Well, you could forego the garage. And.
Technically, technically, yes, but we can't put living space there.
Right, but you could have storage, just not for a car, because it wouldn't be high enough.
Right, but what does that change, though?
Because now you're all on one level. If you drop the.
Cut, cut, cut right through the garage.
If you drop the height of the garage down to be on level with the section on the right.
Drop it, you mean raise it?
No.
She's talking about dropping.
Well, yeah, you, yeah, you raise it.
Making the, if not, the garage not as high, so you couldn't, you couldn't fit a car in it.
But why don't we say we're trying to accomplish?
Then the floors would line up.
But then they don't get any of the living space they're trying to get.
They don't have living space in the garage.
Wait, I thought that's what they did.
No, it's just the garage and mechanical room.
No, you're, you're saying basically bring the upper two levels down to meet the first floor there, or the entry level, as I call it.
Yeah. You're saying.
But in that, so in that case, if we did that, let's say, and we still wanted a, an upper level, third level, whatever you want to call it, on that side. We, we could, because you're now saying that the levels are aligning and we can call that, we can calculate that as one level, that's our second level, if you will. We can use that whole square footage, right? So we're, we're essentially talking about the same thing, except, you know, that the levels meet instead of be a few feet apart.
Is there a question or thing you'd want?
Go ahead, John.
No, I'm just gonna say, we're, we're here talking about, you know, code and what the bylaws says, but eventually, this thing's gonna be built, and so, that, that thing's gonna be there forever, and so, think about the aesthetics and the functionality of, of the space, and so, uh, in the long term, you know, they, they need to build, they should, they should build something that's aesthetically pleasing, that makes sense and functional.
But it needs to be within the bylaw. If it's not gonna be within the bylaw, then it needs to be a variance.
Yeah, I'm just kind of.
I mean, that's, if, if, which is possible, I mean.
Right, but the, the bylaw doesn't say you can't do this, it's how it's interpreted, right? It's not a specific thing that says, oh, for split levels, you have to count X and Y and Z and.
That's where I'm going with this, a lot of gray area.
Well, today's gray day.
Today's.
Theme of the day.
Theme of the day is gray area.
So they fit in the max height with no problem, the question is, is, does it qualify as a two and a half story? And I question that.
No, I, I think it's a fair question, I really do, and, um, you know, that's why I had asked the same thing about one and a half story with Paul on the other project, and, um, you know, it was, it was similar, other than, you know, you didn't just have a split in the floor, right? It's just a split level, there's a lot of split levels around, and how, how are they defined in terms of floors? They're not three or five. You know, there is, it's a.
And I'm not saying five, I'm saying you've got.
Right.
Almost like different structures.
But you, but by, but by the definition, you almost have to say it's five, because you're counting each one as a separate level.
So what we're saying is gray and how we choose to interpret what this is. And we went through a lot of efforts to interpret the previous, previous application.
I mean, if the garage, if the garage were a basement, there would be no issue. If, if it qualified as a basement and half of it were underground.
So it's a packed basement.
You know, that wouldn't, then it wouldn't count as a story because there's no living space in it.
Well, no one's gonna be living, well, unless you really piss around. No one's gonna be living in a, in a car or in a truck.
Highly possible.
I'm gonna rent the car.
And that's the problem we have.
I'm just trying to apply some logic to the matter, like.
It's fine to apply logic, but we also have to consider.
Bylaws.
Bylaws. We can't, we, we only have the right to issue rulings based on what the bylaw allows us to do.
Okay, so for.
We may not like the bylaws, and often we don't, but we can't change the bylaws.
Right.
That's the problem.
If this were a variance, at request for variance, then we have to demonstrate a hardship.
Right, and, and.
And it seems that there's a hardship here.
Well, this lot has a challenge.
Flood, flood zone.
Where it can be, stuff can be built because of the wetlands.
This is a hardship.
Right.
I've taken a, in some cases, a generous interpretation of hardship from the time I've been on this board. Uh, so, um, I think if this were presented as a variance, and if I were a voting member tonight, I would probably approve it.
I see a hardship.
And the approve, and because the hardship is the fact that the building codes have changed and you can no longer, you have to raise structures that were pre, that were pre-existing. And the hardship is ra, having to raise this structure up. Whether you do anything else with it, if you have to raise it up, that's a hardship there. So, I don't know, you know, as before, why there's such a reluctance to seek a variance. When a variance would solve this problem, then we could all go home. Because if you start granting special permits and with interpretations of what you think the bylaws, I think as we go forward, you're gonna be in a pack of trouble.
Right.
And the Superior Court will end up deciding it for you, and then the town will spend even more legal fees. When you could avoid it, and if it were simply a variance, it would probably be granted because the hardship is the fact that the property owner can't deal with the, the fact that we've raised the level because of flooding. It's, and it is three, you know, it's three stories, you'd look at it, you can interpret any way you like, but that's three stories on the left-hand side. Come on, I don't know what you guys are arguing about. It's obvious. So just figure out a way to get it done because it's, it's an enhancement to the neighborhood and everything else.
I think it's a lovely design.
Sure, it's a perfectly decent design.
I have no issue with it, I think, and as, uh, you know, we, we spent a lot of time in the previous application trying to decide what a hardship is, and we, and we were looking at a pool as being a hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a real hardship here.
This is a real hardship.
I agree too.
So.
Well, then, we need to see an application for a variance, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable?
How, well, how is the original, um, it's fine, how is the original, um, notice, um, sent? Was it either or, or was it just special permit?
It was just.
I'm trying, I'm reading to that now.
It was just special permit, and therefore, we'd have to, we have to go through the whole new notification process, um, for a variance. Because a variance is, is stricter than a special permit.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at the notice.
It is on, they have to check both boxes.
Well, right, because we were told we didn't really need to initially, but, um, I mean, again, not, not opposed to a variance if everybody is, you know, generally supportive of it. It's just, um, you know, time, again, um, you know, for the applicant. Let me, let me shut up, so.
Eat the time and go back.
You approved from CommCom yet?
We're waiting on this one first.
That's next, yeah.
Oh. Well, I, I think the sense of the board, is the sense of the board that we would consider this as a variance.
Would I consider it under a variance application? Yeah.
And feel that there's a hardship because of the difficulty in building on the lot?
Yeah, I think that's resolved.
I agree.
Is there any, do we take public commentary?
What?
Do we take public commentary?
We did it.
Oh, we have to do it again.
Well, if, if you want to move this to a variance, there's really no point in taking public comment on a special permit, right?
I mean, is that acceptable? I mean, you could go ahead and apply to CommCom.
Oh, yeah.
Not wait for this. The challenge is it would be September.
Right.
It's too late in the process for.
I mean.
Not gonna block.
Not gonna hit? Gallivanting around the world?
Unless we change the week.
Change the one week? Definitely, I'd be willing to.
Is the board available the fourth week in August? No.
I'm out of the country, um. I'm back, um.
Week in August.
And it's Labor Day, is it Labor Day on the 30th?
It's usually September.
No, it has to be Sept, it's the 4th.
I'll be back the 27th.
It's the first Monday.
So, school time's on the 30th? That's the first day of school, yeah, 30th.
We could hold an August meeting. Are you available on the 30th?
It's 30th?
Yes.
Hold on, let me find out one of my tickets for James Taylor's.
Go ahead, it's Wednesday, yeah, yeah.
Believe I.
You're back on the thirtieth.
Yes.
Let me just check, I don't have. It's September first. Yeah, I don't think that will work. Got a, got a seat, we expect a little bit of accommodation, compromise, yeah.
So it looks like we'll be able to hold an August meeting on August thirtieth.
Okay.
And we would give you, I mean, the, the deadline for August was Monday.
Is it effectively the same application, just with that other box checked?
Yes.
Right, right.
In another.
And a, and a big, and a bigger check.
Yeah, I think it would be reasonable for you to just pay the difference between, um, what you paid and what it would have been if you had filed it jointly.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Um, because we have to do, no, we have to do notice again and everything, um.
And we can just blow in and out on this one, right, this, we just go on on August.
Okay, so, do you want to withdraw this application, or do you want to continue it?
I think what makes the most sense.
I'm sure that makes more sense, withdraw and. I think it makes more sense to withdraw.
To withdraw and then withdraw without prejudice.
To withdraw.
Yeah, sorry?
Withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Um.
This is exciting.
Um. And then they can find my page.
Now, the August meeting would just have this application on it?
And there's one other, one other.
So all the other, okay.
There's one other that we weren't sure whether we could go forward anyway. Um, is to add thirty eight square feet to it.
Wonderful.
The infill.
I hope it's in a gray area.
Oh, yeah, because we're doing really great, really, really good right now.
It's got gray on or not form. Could, could we also, could we also ask for an expedited decision after that? Whichever way it goes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, that's fair.
You can ask for whatever you want.
As long as I'm not writing it.
Um, I move to close a public hearing and accept the, the applicant, and at the request of the applicant, um, move to accept the withdrawal of the application without prejudice of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc., on behalf of Joseph and El, Elise, is it Elise?
Elise.
Okay, Elise Campanelli, for a special permit under section seven point two, twelve point five, and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw, and or other relief is maybe necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot at additional levels, including additional mass encroaching into the side setback, adjusting the footprint and adding a new second level, uh, which will encroach into the side setback at four Butler Ave, assessors map number one, lot number thirty-three in District B, filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second? Brian seconds. A vote. Sean.
Who?
Catherine.
Approve.
Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Okay, sorry, this is very complicated, sorry, but wait a minute, I need you to sign this.
Almost, we have some minutes to approve, I think we're almost done.
Yeah, um.
Are we approving the minutes?
I, I, I'm approving the minutes, I don't know what you're doing.
You crossed all the Ts, dotted all the Is.
I, I prefer.
Punctuation is proper.
Well, ninety percent sure of the punctuation, but.
Just break your name inside.
Okay. I probably would misspell it. I get that all.
Just copy it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Sorry, this is so long.
I'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been fun and exciting.
Okay. Moving on to administrative ideals. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three?
Last number two.
Catherine moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian seconds. All in favor?
Approved.
Thank you. Um, Yale's status of decisions.
What?
Too outstanding.
Yeah.
Four North Street and one seventeen School Street.
But we need.
And minutes will be along.
Okay.
I got four North Street.
Yeah, you do, yeah, John has four North.
Yeah, I have one seventeen School.
Who's reviewing, John?
You.
Um, I didn't write that down, Brian, but why don't we give it to you?
You just volunteered.
Oh, I, I have it at home, I'll let you know.
I think, I think I wanted to learn it.
So I usually send it to Sarah.
And I wanted to learn it.
He can send it to me.
She's really responsive.
Okay, um, I sent you people, you people.
You guys.
I said you people.
I, I sent around the information we received on the forty D application.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I read through some of it, what's, what's the scoop?
So the, the pre-trial conference is now scheduled for August fifteenth.
No, saw that.
MECT was not approved as an intervenor, but they can participate and get copies of everything. The ten people group
Uh-huh.
was approved with, as an intervenor with respect.
Ten people group, I forgot that.
Just a second outside, with respect to, um, providing evidence regarding and harm to the environment under the local bylaws. And I don't know who all the members are of that group, but Greg Crockett is a representative for the group who is, I believe, on the board of MECT.
So it's just a backdoor attempt.
Is it?
There's different sections of the code under which you can be an intervenor.
So basically, this group can bring in
Their own experts.
Their own experts, which MECT would have brought in anyway.
Right.
Just go with me.
Is MECT disqualified from being a witness now, because they moved to be an intervenor?
I don't know.
So can I ask, what, how, how come the, a special group is allowed, but not MECT, who's been to every meeting and had their own?
I'm just curious as to why they have standing MECT.
Because the special group.
Special.
The, the.
It's okay if you don't know this, I'm just asking.
The, the, the law allows ten, ten residents to bring, to ask to be an intervenor.
But not another.
Ten residents have a spes, have a special permission, another intervenor provision.
They get a special entrance group.
Right, right, so they can come forward and can allege.
They're trying to use tech individuals.
And they have different criteria to meet.
Environmental, whereas the MECT
It's another board.
is not a direct debiter.
Yeah.
Okay.
And therefore, their application was talking about preserving the wilderness, and it was not specific enough to qualify as an intervenor.
So it's just.
Plus, I think the applications were the same for both. Yeah, so, um.
Tomato, tomato.
Yeah, I think so.
Eight, eight.
August fifteenth, and we're not gonna get anything saying we failed to appear, right?
No, and so I had them change the timeline on the website.
Okay.
So we're basically backing things up, up, about, everything up at least seven months, so I don't think we'll have a decision from HAC until end of twenty twenty-four or beginning of, I bet it would be beginning of twenty twenty-five. You know, because they.
You think the cost of, uh, construction.
And they will, at the August fifteenth meeting, they're supposed to be establishing the timeline.
Okay.
Okay.
Which will, yeah.
So they'll give, I don't know, they probably extend it to one serena, but they give them.
I was gonna say, it's gonna change.
A certain amount of time to bring forward the affidavits and, you know, but it will.
I mean, people always ask for extensions, so it's never actually that amount of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'll all be dead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or off the board.
Well, and then, well, and then.
Moved out of town.
No matter what happens, no matter what the HAC rules, somebody's gonna appeal it.
Mm-hmm.
It's important, so.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's gonna become economically unfeasible, will that.
Anything else?
Uh, what's going on with Blossom Lane? To Blossom Lane.
Hey, we're gonna sue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get approved?
Is just any updates since
It's in the, it's in the, in the courts.
Yeah.
I just wondered if I have to be fitted for a Trump suit.
Um.
Thank you, Marla.
Just take the one out of your closet.
Because the town's insurance carrier is providing legal counsel for the town. Because the attorney alleged ex parte conversations. I, um, please.
I'm sorry?
So it has, it's taken a little different twist, but I think that the attorneys for Two Blossom Lane felt that they were in a good position, that the attorney for Two Blossom Lane is
Yeah.
represent, yeah, no.
No, not, not.
The property owner.
Property.
Who's representing the property owner?
Um, Julie Berry.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And she's the one who alleged the ex parte communication?
No, I'm the.
Oh, that makes more sense.
Alleged the ex parte, so the town, usually a town council, and somebody, it's the insurance carrier, council that's
Hmm.
Because the property owner wouldn't be doing the time. Yeah, so I don't know where it stands. I don't think it will be, surely.
It's funny.
Any, anything else?
That's it.
New member get approved of it, so I'm worried, he didn't, he didn't approve, he didn't just.
He didn't pass the Cory check?
No, he wasn't notified in time to show up.
No, never notified, I saw his wife tonight, she said it didn't, he didn't get it to what, Monday or Tuesday?
Monday afternoon, Monday morning, it got, Thomas came back.
I may, I may, I, I know I mentioned it to him.
Came back from vacation and they had the meeting that night. The new applicant for zoning board, we're down a member right now.
What's his name?
Robert Stiles.
Let's all go to his house, put notice on it, telling him when and where to be.
And Sean wasn't notified.
He got nothing either.
Um, and he was scheduled to, two weeks ago, to have an interview with the software.
Why?
I don't know, things are just.
You want to meet him?
Just.
No, actually, you wouldn't, there was no reason for you to be, you know, uh, interviewed by this like would.
I was.
Not the second time around.
I just sit here in front of everybody with my.
I, I think the, the reason.
No, no, on a, on a reappointment, no, sign on next, next job.
I think the reason they did it was because it was moving from alternate to full.[1760.84]